Call the committee of the whole of March the twenty second to order. And call for an adoption of the agenda. Councillors Cunningham, Councillors Nish, any discussions, additions, deletions, all in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. We're here to discuss a single item, that's the twenty twenty-three draft budget. And with that, I'll turn things over to you, Dr. Buckett, and you can take it from here.
Thank you, your worship. Can we have the next slide, please? Your worship, here's a an outline of the presentation this evening. And I'll just note that this is a little bit different from previous years in that I will be taking part of the presentation. But the majority of it will still be done by Director Bombin. So I will discuss the first four items. And Director Bombin will deal with the second half of the discussion, which will take the majority of the discussion in any case. Can I have the next slide, please? Your worship. Next slide, please. Your worship, this has been an extraordinarily difficult budget process. And I like to emphasize that this is a draft budget. It's not a proposed budget. It's a preliminary draft. We are at a point that council needs to consider the draft and give direction. Budget reduction, further budget reductions may require service cuts, and this needs to be directed by council. Staff have worked very hard to cut budget requests. However, there are significant drivers, cost drivers, that have limited, impacted our ability to bring in a lower tax increase. We will review the internal and external cost drivers. And also address the significant revenue challenges that are in part responsible for this potential tax increase. The city is in a state where significant investment in infrastructure renewal is required. Addressing and resolving our financial and infrastructure challenges is a critical and ongoing effort by council and staff. Currently, we have to respond to infrastructure that is past life expectancy and is failing. And we have to address revenue issues that have not enabled the city to look after its physical assets appropriately. Some of our principal revenue issues include the port tax cap, the reduction of PILT payments by the Prince Rupert Port Authority. Both the port tax cap and PILT payment reduction place the burden of city operations and capital expenditures on residents and businesses not on, and are not shared sufficiently by port industries or the port authority. Another challenge is our ferry service. This requires an extraordinarily large subsidy every year to around one and a half million dollars. So this really underscores the need for new revenues and reinstated revenues from the province and the federal governments. When one of those initiatives that council is working on that you're aware of is trying to bring in a revenue, a resource benefit agreement, revenue sharing agreement with the province. It's one of several revenue initiatives that council is working on. Your worship, our infrastructure deficit measures in the hundreds of millions. For example, our water system is over a hundred years old. And about one quarter of it, twenty-six kilometers, is failing. For this twenty-six kilometers, it will cost over two hundred million dollars to renew the water and the adjacent sewer lines, just for that portion, for that one quarter of our system. On top of that, we have water treatment, sewage treatment, and other infrastructure that will require investments. And while the city is very active raising funds to assist with this effort, there is a need for the city to participate in the investment that's required. And that is reflected in this budget, in particular, in the utility fees aspect. We are working with the provincial and federal governments to resolve the revenue issues and to secure funding for infrastructure renewal. And we are very pleased and thankful for the recently announced sixty-five million dollars from the province. And we are continuing to work towards a federal contribution. Even with these contributions, there will be a need for funding by the city. And without fixes to our revenue problems, the burden of that funding will be carried by residential and business properties. The PRPA and capped port industries will not share in this burden without changes that we're working on. Next slide, please. Actually, can we go back one? Sorry, your worship, this slide is meant to illustrate that the budget is being prepared within the direction of council's strategic plan. All of the budget elements are reflected in these goals. And I note that there's three, in particular, you know, working on our fiscal health, which speaks to revenues. Replacing and renewing infrastructure and community renewal are really central to the budget effort. Next slide, please. This is a summary of our services. Airport access is unique to Prince Rupert, as our community is the only one in Canada to operate a ferry service as a part of a provincial and national transportation system. And I note that our landfill, while not unique, it's fairly uncommon for a city to operate in basically its own landfill. This is typically a regional function. Next slide, please. Your worship, the city pays for its services through three self-funded utility funds and an operating fund. Each utility has fees that pay for its function and capital infrastructure. The operating fund is funded through grants, leases, fees, and property tax. Operating pays for things like security services, recreation, and roads, amongst others. Property taxes do not pay for utilities. And likewise, utility fees do not pay for operating or other utility functions. This is an important point. The borrowing that we will have to do to fund our share of infrastructure will be funded through utility fees, which, as I've mentioned, the port industries generally do not pay into. So this means that they do not help pay for infrastructure through taxes or through utility fees. Excellent, please. In building the budget for twenty twenty-three, there are certain financial plan assumptions that are embedded, including the provision for statutory financial obligations and debt servicing requirements, meeting our contractual obligations, including wages, services, and supplies, including financial assistance to organizations through grants and permissive exemptions, making assumptions for energy and supply cost escalations which have been significant. I'd note that some of our supplies have gone up over fifty percent for the cost of materials. Adherence to legislative requirements and strategic plans of council is another assumption. Maintaining service levels at those levels that are already in place and maintaining a sufficient amount of cash on hand to meet obligations as obligations come due. Next slide, please. Your worship, I'd like to start with a summary of the main cost drivers for this year's draft budget to help set the stage for the presentation of major capital and operating requests. This slide shows external cost drivers, or those budgetary impacts that are outside of the direct control of the city, which makes up a significant proportion of the proposed increase for the twenty twenty-three budget. This year, the city has experienced a reduction in budget revenues from reduced payments in lieu of taxes on port properties, which accounts for four point three percent of the proposed increase. This is, and this causes additional legal and appraisal fees to the city dealing with this matter. The city has filed with, filed an application with the dispute advisory panel to argue against the reduction in evaluation that the port of Prince Rupert Authority has imposed on us. However, judgment, sorry, judgment on this dispute is not likely to be provided this year. So we cannot account for that in this budget season. We'd also like to note that because of the cap on port industrial properties, the city is unable to share this increase among all property tax-paying classes. If the city could charge all major industry operators the city's class four rate from last year, it would mean two million dollars of the budget paid by everyday people and business owners would be paid by the port terminals. We have failing infrastructure pipes. But because the port operators aren't connected to the city's utilities, it means that they can't share in these fee increases that will ultimately occur to fix and replace the pipe network. Meanwhile, inflationary costs are higher in Prince Rupert than the approximate seven percent increase nationally in the Consumer Price Index. And this Consumer Price Index is not an accurate reflection of what the municipal, you know, bag of goods are. Price of asphalt is included in Consumer Price Index, for example. Other external increases relate to increased insurance costs and reduction in some revenues. Excellent, one, please. The internal cost drivers include increases for expired or expiring collective agreements and related benefits and mandatory employment-related costs. I would note that the contracts we have completed have been consistent with other communities. And I'd like to note at this time, I'd like to emphasize just how well-served this community is by our staff. This was demonstrated by the very long hours outside and admin staff put in during our state of emergency last December. With the help of contractors and almost non-stop response for twelve days during December, our staff were able to keep our water flowing. During that time, we had nine water main breaks, fifteen city service breaks, and staff assisted with some fourteen homeowner service issues. And we think this is actually an underestimate. It was a significant time where staff were basically going twenty-four seven for twelve days. Your worship, some staff and new staff positions have been requested. And these are in departments that are currently critically under-resourced. Increases in community enhancement grants, legal expenses to meet the strategic priorities, and a return to pre-pandemic recreation hours are also an internal driver. Next slide, please. So, your worship, this slide is simply to say that, you know, on average, the assessment of property values went up fourteen percent. And that doesn't mean that, that doesn't translate into a fourteen percent tax increase. That simply says that property values went up fourteen percent. If somebody's property value was less than fourteen percent, they would be paying less than somebody that whose property values went up more than fifty percent, less for any tax increase that is ultimately approved by council. Your worship, I am going to jump ahead to introduce the draft tax increase at this point. Can we go to page ninety-nine? No, I guess not. Don't worry about that. We'll just deal with this orally. Your worship, as I mentioned, this has been an extraordinarily difficult budget year with internal and external cost drivers that have resulted in a tax rate increase of fifteen point seven percent. To reduce this measurably in any significant way, it probably means service reductions. And that, as I mentioned, is driven by council. And sadly, this tax increase is not that far out of line with other communities. And it's somewhat higher with some of our unique situations in Prince Rupert. So from this point on in the presentation, Director Bombin is going to go into the specific budget requests and the rationales for them. I'll hand it over to Director Bombin.
Thank you. Thank you. So as in, for council that were with us last budget year, you'll be familiar with, we will be going through each capital item, then the special requests, and then we will be going through the operating item requests. Staff who are responsible for each of these areas are in the room. If council has any questions of a specific request, you are asked to request that they come to the table and they could go ahead, you can proceed to ask their question. If there are no questions, I will just continue going through each of these slides. As City Manager did mention, this is a draft budget. So if you can, you're free to go ahead and just write down some questions if you don't feel like having it all stop right right in the middle of the presentation, and you can also ask those questions at the end. And so I will proceed. If council could go ahead and turn to page fifty-two in their package. We will start with the first capital request, which is in the fire department category. The item that is requested is the new fire hall building design. The asset cost is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It is proposed to be funded a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from reserves and a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from grant. So council will note that there is no taxation component or utility fee component to this one. It's being funded in other means. And we can go to the next slide, please. The next slide is for the fire reserve pumper. This was in last year's budget. However, the price was higher than was approved in the previous year. And so council gave direction mid-year to go ahead and order the pumper, which won't be delivered until this year. And with a direction to include the increase in this year's budget. So the total asset cost is one point three million dollars and is proposed to be funded from borrowing. Next slide, please. This one is in the category of building. This is the city hall boiler replacement and HVAC. This asset cost is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, funded entirely from reserves and grant. Next slide, please. The Leicester Centre roof request is forty thousand dollars, and this is to obtain engineering and design documents. So the Leicester Centre roof, which has four separate roofs, can proceed with being replaced. This is a thirty-five-year-old asset, and we've already replaced the roof over the main stage. And we will be looking to replace roofs in sections and stages. And this is to be funded out of reserves. Next slide, please. This is still in the building category. This is library heating assessment and improvements. Asset cost is fifty thousand, funded out of reserves. And this is for assessing and improving the boiler and heating system at the library. Next slide, please. The CN Building Revitalization. This project was approved for over the last two years of budget. This is a rollover of the remainder of this project, and it is all being funded out of grants. It does say reserve and grant. We received the Northern Capital Grant years ago, and it was put inside a reserve for purposes of capital builds. So of the two million, one point seven two is out of the grant reserve, and then three hundred thousand dollars from a grant from NDIT. That project will be completed this year. Next slide, please. This is the Canfiscal Warehouse Roof Improvements. The city is leasing the Canfiscal Warehouse. There are some sub-tenants within that building, and there's some leaks. So the asset cost is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and this is proposed to be paid via dividend from Prince Rupert Legacy, Inc. Next slide, please. This is the Public Works Leasehold Improvement to, for the lease at the GM McCarthy dealership. Public Works will be moving into this building, and there needs to be some washrooms and HVAC upgrades and some separation for some office spaces. The asset cost is estimated at two million dollars, and it is all being funded from a dividend from Prince Rupert Legacy, Inc. Next slide, please. This is the new policing detachment. This is a rollover of last year's budget request. Construction is just started this year, as council has awarded the contract. The asset cost is twenty-six point one million. One point one million is out of reserves. And twenty-five million dollars is out of borrowing. Council authorized a twenty-five million dollar loan authorization bylaw in twenty twenty-two. We have not taken on that debt yet. We will not do that until after substantial completion of the building, and we will trigger the debenture. Next slide, please. This is still in the policing, and this is a victim services vehicle. Victim Services is one of the services offered by the city. It is partly funded by the province as well. The department was able to obtain a grant to replace a vehicle that the province has returned back into their own service. The asset cost is forty-two thousand, grant of forty-two thousand dollars. Next slide, please. This is the Recreation Department. Their civic upstairs washroom accessibility upgrade is proposed, asset cost of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, a hundred and forty-three thousand to be funded out of a grant, and twelve thousand out of dividends. This is to ensure that there's accessible washrooms on the second floor. In twenty sixteen, an accessibility ramp was installed, rather. And so this would just make the upstairs accessible for all. Next slide, please. This is still in the Recreation Department. Within the civic center itself, there are some various upgrades. Door repairs, lighting, insulation, and roof overhangs and exterior cladding. Asset cost is two hundred and ten thousand dollars. It is proposed to be funded out of taxation. Next slide, please. This is in real estate, and this is the annual land purchase that the city gets approval for, to have the availability of funds to be able to purchase various pieces of land that are deemed necessary for the city to be able to register rights of way, this sort of thing. The asset cost is fifty thousand dollars, all funded out of reserves. Next slide, please. As council is aware, we have Watson Island, and the power that is on it needs improvement. The asset cost is thirty-five thousand dollars, and this is to be funded out of a dividend from the operations on Watson Island. Next slide, please. And this is still all the same. This is Watson Dam Safety Audit. So along with the Watson Island tax sale that came to the city, we inherited some dams, and therefore we must maintain them and do a safety audit. The asset cost is proposed at a hundred thousand dollars, all funded from operations on Watson Island through a dividend. Next slide, please. This is in Civic Improvements, Streetlight Replacement Program. The Operations Department is requesting funds to continue replacement of streetlights. It targets streetlights that need replacement due to corrosion at the base. The asset cost is fifty thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars to be funded out of a dividend, and twenty-five thousand dollars out of taxation. Next slide, please. Waterfront development is proposed, and this is to relocate the airport ferry dock down to the area in front of Quinnetza Station. This is considered a necessity, given the fact that there is a lot of congestion that is going on with the railway tracks at the current location. The asset cost is ten point eight seven million dollars, and we have obtained a grant for all of that. Next slide, please. This is the Third Avenue in Fulton Traffic Light. This is a very old traffic signal, and it has passed its useful life and doesn't conform to today's standards. The asset cost is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and is proposed to be funded via dividend. The next item is a controlled access and cameras at Public Works Yard. Given the fact that the Public Works staff will be relocating to a different location, there is still our Public Works site, which is going to have all of our heavy-duty vehicles and, of course, has our other inventories. So it is proposed that there will be cameras that will be placed there. Asset cost thirty-eight thousand dollars, and the proposed funding is all through a dividend. It is proposed that there will be reinstated a park, playground equipment at the Odd Idsvik Park. The asset cost for this is fifty thousand dollars. This is a rollover from previous twenty twenty-two budget. And therefore, this is funded out of surplus. Another rollover is the McBride Street Sport Court. The tennis court needs to be resurfaced. The asset cost is thirty-five thousand dollars, and it is proposed to be funded out of surplus. Next item is vehicles and mobile equipment. This specifically is a single-axle dump truck with sander plow. This was actually proposed from previous year, but we were not able to obtain it. It is being delivered in twenty twenty-three, rather. We are requesting a rollover of this funding. The asset is three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, is being funded in part out of reserves, fifteen thousand, and borrowing of three hundred thousand dollars. This is another rollover. Is GPS Truck System. It is to keep track of all of the Operations Department fleet for asset management and health and safety purposes. The asset cost is fifty thousand dollars, and it is proposed to be funded out of reserve fifty thousand. The next item is in vehicles and mobile equipment as well, and this is a skid steer. This item was approved in the prior year as well, and delivery is scheduled for twenty twenty-three. The asset cost is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it is being funded out of reserves. Next item is the F five fifty tow vehicle for water equipment. This is to tow all of the Public Works equipment trailers. The current unit is old and constantly breaks down, leaving the equipment stranded. The asset cost is a hundred and sixty-five thousand. It is to be funded out of reserves. This is an item that was approved in the 2022 budget, but again with the supply chain issues, we expect delivery of this item in 2023 and still needed approved in the 2023 budget. It is the F-600 Garbage Truck. And asset cost is $297,000, all to be funded out of reserves. Next item is the landfill dozer. For several years, the landfill has been renting an excavator to place some compact refuse on the active face. Using an excavator to complete this work is inefficient. Dozer can spread consistent lifts reliably and track pack as it goes. This is an essential piece of equipment for this service. The asset cost is $839,000 and is proposed to be funded through borrowing. Next item is landfill excavator for recycling site. The Operations Department is requesting to purchase a new excavator for landfill on the recycling side. Although the excavator is inefficient on the active face, as previously mentioned, it would be more efficient on the recycling side. The asset cost is $250,000 and is proposed to be funded through borrowing. And the last vehicle and mobile equipment item is a buyout of leased residential recycling collection truck. This truck was initially leased and in consultation with staff, it was determined that it is more cost effective to purchase the unit outright. This collection truck enables the city to still meet the weekly schedule that residents are accustomed to for waste and recycling collection. The asset cost is $400,000, proposed to be funded through borrowing. And this is in the transportation sector. Bridge repairs on Sixth Avenue East. We need to conduct repairs routinely. This is a very old bridge, as is the Second Avenue Bridge. And so to keep it in good service, this is proposed for this year. We had an assessment done of the bridges last year and so we know exactly where to target. The asset cost is $450,000, funded out of reserves and dividend. And as such, with the assessment, we will also be conducting repairs on the Second Avenue West Bridge. The asset cost is $200,000 and is proposed to be funded $200,000 out of reserves. We will be continuing the sidewalk program. Asset cost is $100,000, funded out of existing taxation. And we have the annual paving of $1 million, funded out of existing taxation. And on to solid waste. The old landfill cell at Wanted Road is required to be closed as ordered by the Ministry of Environment. The asset cost is $100,000 to be funded out of solid waste utility fees. And the landfill cell closure for this particular, sorry, the cells that were just finished and just completed using basically out at the Ridley Island area is proposed to be funded out of accruals and is $200,000. And that was for engineering, sorry. And then also going forward with the actual closure itself, the asset cost is $2.2 million, funded out of landfill accruals. Just for context, when you have a landfill, you need to set aside funds to ensure that you can go ahead and close the cell once it's completely utilized. And since now we have just opened up the new cell, we must conduct the closure, which we have had savings for, which is reflected in the accrual. And as I've mentioned, we have the new landfill cell is in operation. The Operations Department is requesting funds to complete commissioning works on the new cell and lagoon. With the commissioning of the new cell and lagoon, funds required to upgrade the blowers, purchase a media tank and other compliance related items. The asset cost for this is $1.5 million, all to be funded out of reserves. And the city is requesting funds to complete the final payments associated with the Woodworth Dam project, which is now finished. The project requires $400,000 and is all to be funded out of a dividend. And we do have some road protection and dock upgrades out on the Woodworth side. The asset cost is $700,000 and is to be funded by a dividend from Watson Island. We are in the works for designing the water treatment facility. And this will require $3 million to be funded out of reserves. We did receive a grant, the grant was placed in a reserve. And as well, the grant, which was placed into a reserve, is proposed to be used for the submarine line replacement and overland line design. Asset cost is $2 million for the design, funded out of reserve. And with the next slide, the submarine line itself and the overland line construction is proposed at $12 million, funded in part through a reserve and also through an additional grant. This is in the water and you will see also later on through the sewer. We require upgrades to our communications system for water and sewer works. This is called the SCADA upgrade. The asset cost is $1.2 million and is proposed to be funded out of reserves. Park Avenue Water Repair Paving is the next item. This is a rollover from 2022. We were not able to get to it in 2022, but there was a water break and given the fact that it is on Park Avenue, it requires ministry level paving to be placed on it. So we're proposing to do it out of surplus. And Water Infrastructure Replacement Strategy Design Works. As the city manager mentioned earlier, we are conducting some significant repairs and replacement to our system, 26 kilometers. And we will need to do some design work planning for that. We were very fortunate to receive the announcement from the province on Friday and part of our contribution is to do the design for our infrastructure replacement strategy. The cost of this is $4.75 million and is proposed out of borrowing. And we also need to do a water master plan, which is stemming from the infrastructure replacement strategy. This master plan needs to be incorporated into the infrastructure renewal. The asset cost is $250,000 and is proposed out of borrowing. The Operations Department is requesting funds for the design and replacement of the water transmission line on Shawatlin's Road. It is the most important and critical pipe in the city's system. It broke twice in 2022. And so we are proposing replacement of that one first, since it is such a critical component. The asset cost is $10 million and is all going to be funded out of a grant. One of the items that broke during the Christmas break that Dr. Bucken mentioned was on First Avenue. And although part of it has been fixed, it is a 1916 water line. So it makes sense to complete the rest of the repairs and have a brand new line, all continuous. The asset cost is $2.1 million and is all proposed to be funded out of a grant. And as Dr. Bucken mentioned, staff work incredibly hard going and responding to water breaks. This funding is embedded in our water utility. It is asset cost of $750,000, funded out of our utility fees. And this is for continuous emergency repairs that we respond to over the course of a year. Moving on to wastewater. We are doing a liquid waste management plan. This is for the engineering and design for the liquid waste wetland treatment system. The asset cost is $250,000 and proposed to be funded out of a grant. The Liquid Waste Wetland Treatment Pilot Project, which the management plan that I just mentioned is all in relation to, is proposed to be funded $1.5 million out of surplus and $4.5 million out of grant. The total asset cost is $6 million. And as mentioned before, here's the wastewater section of the SCADA upgrade. Asset cost is $1 million to be funded out of wastewater surplus. City is requesting funds to complete the Hayes Creek Sewer Replacement Study. Currently, a sewer main runs along and at some points through Hayes Creek in McLemmon Park. The study would review and design a solution. The asset cost is $100,000 and is proposed to be funded out of surplus. There is a treatment plant at the industrial park for wastewater. We are proposing some engineering to replace the plant or upgrade it, rather. The asset cost is $150,000, proposed out of wastewater surplus. We are requesting funds to continue with Outfall Repair Program. The federal government requires this program under the Liquid Waste Management Plan to ensure our outfalls are operating as they should be. This year, we are proposing to repair the Seal Cove Outfall. Asset cost of $25,000, funded out of the wastewater utility fees. And we will be continuing with Outfall Repairs at Outfall L. Asset cost is $1.08 million, funded out of wastewater surplus. And we are also going to be conducting repairs at Outfall J2I, which is at the Rushbrook float area. And this is proposed to be $1.5 million, $900,000 funded through surplus and $600,000 out of utility fees. And as mentioned, with the water repair funding for emergency repairs, we also have embedded in the wastewater utility $750,000 for emergency sewage repairs. And this is still funded out of the utility fee. And that completes the capital requests and we will be now moving on to special projects. In the Fire Department, we will need to do an upgrade to the UHF radio system. The asset cost is $200,000. It's proposed to be funded $40,000 out of surplus and $160,000 out of grant. And also within the Fire Department, there's some small equipment and software for the something for thermal layers, sorry, and structure fires, which helps to remove smoke conditions. That equipment needs to be replaced and also software for incident reporting needs to be updated. Asset cost is $30,000 to be funded out of a dividend. In 2020, the city was awarded a grant for a program called the Situation Tables. However, with the pandemic, the program was delayed. This is a rollover of grant funding. And $43,000 is left and we hope to have the entire program brought back to life and the funding spent in 2023. In the policing department, the RCMP requests funds to accommodate the training needs of its municipal employees who provide clerical support to frontline police officers. This training is in the Police Records Information Environment. The project cost is $7,000 and is to be funded out of a dividend. Moving on to Civic Improvements, Parks and Open Space Master Plan. This project began in 2022 and this is a request for approval to carry forward the funds that were not completely spent in 2022. This plan intends to guide staff on a systematic approach for parks, undeveloped lands and green spaces and outdoor recreational services. The asset cost is $59,000 is remaining and is to be funded out of surplus. Downtown Revitalization and Asset Management. Staff have been working with stakeholders on a downtown revitalization plan and new public realm streetscape standards. Project cost is $160,000, funded in part through grants and the remainder through dividends. Annual Asset Management Budget is requested. It's a vital part of the renewal of the city's infrastructure and this program helps to track and identify and appropriately maintain items in the city's assets. Project cost is $25,000, proposed out of a grant. Special Projects for Vehicle and Mobile Equipment is requested to have funds for a Fleet Management Report. This report is very common for municipalities in their fleet management program. It is used towards a structured fleet renewal process. Project cost is $59,000. It was actually approved in 2022. We're requesting a rollover in surplus will be the funding. Oh, 25. And then in Arena, Zamboni Engine Replacement is necessary. The Zamboni is heavily used during the ice season and repairs took the Zamboni out of service this year. So budget is requested for servicing the equipment. Project cost is $30,000, funded out of a dividend. And budget is requested to replace some fitness equipment at the gym. Project cost is $10,000, funded out of a dividend. We'd like to complete the transportation strategy for the community. This is a high level plan that guides staff in advancing active transportation initiatives. The project cost that's remaining is $29,000 and it's funded out of surplus. This was completed in two thousand twenty three, but we require the rollover to be included in the budget. It is the electric vehicle charging stations that are now installed and operational at the civic center. Project cost is twenty five thousand dollars funded through grant. This is a rollover of last year as well. It's Public Works HR Assessment Report. Project cost is ten thousand and is to be funded out of a dividend. In Human Resources Department, Safe Work Procedures, Field Hazard Assessment and Training. Project cost is a hundred thousand dollars funded in part through surplus and dividend. This particular item is to identify industry procedures, sorry, for safety and field assessments, which are ever changing. And in the Planning Department, we are requesting dedication of funds obtained through a grant to develop a climate action plan. Project cost is ninety three thousand dollars, as mentioned, funded through a grant. And in the Planning Department still is the Social Development and Poverty Reduction Plan. The department is requesting a dedication of funds obtained through grants to develop the Social Development Poverty Reduction Plan, which will meet council strategic priority. Project cost is twenty five thousand dollars funded through a grant. The Community Efficiency Financing Feasibility Study is requested through Planning Department. It is funded by FCM, the Federation of Community Municipalities, through a grant of sixty thousand dollars. This project is being conducted by ECO Trust to explore barriers and opportunities for residents in Prince Rupert to conduct energy efficiency upgrading. And that includes the special projects section of the draft budget. Now we are moving into operations. Cost, an operational cost of one point five two four million dollars is requested through taxation to fund the bargaining unit and exempt staff who are conducting all of the services. This is the expected wage and associated benefit increases. And it results in approximately seven point one five percent of the proposed tax increase. Next slide, please. There is some RCMP contract increases that the city is proposing to pay for. It's two hundred eighty seven thousand dollars and it is funded out of taxation. And as mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, one of the requests for staff is within the Finance Department, who is requesting an additional half full time equivalent to assist in our payroll function. The operational cost is forty three thousand dollars and is funded through, proposed to be funded through taxation. We are requesting funding for a full time equivalent for the Human Resources Department. Right now, our Human Resources Department is managed by a grand total of one and a half people. And that's for five central departments and two hundred and thirty employees. The additional staff member will aid the Human Resources Manager in Recruitment, Retention, Labor Relations, et cetera. As everyone knows, recruitment and retention is a pretty hot topic right now. It is an operational cost of a hundred and ten thousand dollars funded out of taxation. We are applying for a grant for the next position. It is the Social Development and Indigenous Relations Coordinator. This individual will meet council's priority of social development strategy in Strategic Plan and the implementation of the reconciliation policy framework. The operational cost is sixty five thousand dollars. As mentioned, we're applying for a grant. The funding is fifty five thousand and ten thousand dollars contribution in taxation. Our Information Technology Department, our IT Department, is requesting a full time equipment equivalent to keep up with demand. The department, after a survey, is quite understaffed for the number of user accounts. This, this department has been pretty lean and mean, but we, we can't, we can't grind them into the ground. And so we're asking for a full time equivalent that probably won't start until halfway through the year and therefore the operational cost is sixty seven thousand dollars funded through taxation. And that is just an extension of the last. You can go ahead and change the slide. Thank you. And the operations, sorry, Recreation Complex Return to Pre-Pandemic Hours will require a hundred and three thousand dollar taxation. And this is to bring all of the hours back to full and we no longer have any more smart restart COVID nineteen funds to draw from for this. In meeting council's objectives, legal expenses increased broadly in two thousand twenty two. This included, in large part, housing initiatives, land development initiatives, agreements with First Nations. And the operational cost is about a hundred thousand dollars and so there is an increase requested to be funded out of taxation. Community enhancement grants were awarded in two thousand twenty two with direction to implement and include in the budget for two thousand twenty three, the increase. The increase is ninety three thousand dollars and is funded through taxation. Majority of this increase is the library. Inclusive in fiscal revenues and expenses are grants, payments in lieu of taxes, gaming revenue. And also there's some of our expenses, fiscal expenses include insurance, tax sharing, debt repayments, et cetera. This year, the largest external cost drivers associated with this particular request relate to the increased tax, sorry, relate to the reduction in the payment in lieu of taxes, which makes up part of the grants prior to taxation needing to fill the balancing hole. The loss of funding is approximately a million dollars. And also we need to increase, well, in, in paying for the dispute advisory panel fight that we're going to have to try and solve some of the evaluation issues. We need to increase a little bit of our budget for legal costs as well associated with that, but the largest portion of this fiscal revenue and expense change is the loss of the PILT. And so the request is for a million thirty nine thousand funded out of tax. And just go to my slide here so I can continue. Legacy is funding a large part of the capital and some of the special projects and also water. Sorry, I just need to get to my slide now. Bear with me. It says there on, on the screen that legacy funding is actually saving of what could have potentially been a further tax increase of another thirteen point eight eight percent. And with the water utility funding that is being provided, that could have been a seventy five point five nine percent increase in water fees. But even after all of these dividends are accounted for, the increase as mentioned by Dr. Buckin to balance, if you go to the next slide, is fifteen point seven percent tax increase. It's a budget shortfall of three point three five four million dollars. The internal rate impacts are sadly not far out of line from other communities this year. Where we differ is the external rate impacts. And you can see there that the internal increases are nine point one percent and the external are six point six. If you could go to the next slide. Just a little bit of perspective. The four capped major industries contribution this year is an additional seventy five thousand dollars, which is two point one percent. And the average homeowner taxes will go up by approximately two hundred and eighty two dollars over two thousand twenty two. So you can see not being able to share the external and inflationary impacts with the capped major industry has consequences on all the rest of the taxpayers. If we could move to the next slide. So we are asking council for input on options to reduce the draft increase. Next slide. We've identified it, identified some possible courses of action. As mentioned in the infographic at the beginning of the presentation, taxes affect the operating budget, not utilities budgets. So the only way to impact the property tax rate is to propose changes to those services. None of these possibilities are considered reasonable, but if council would like us to explore the impact, we can and bring the possible financial impact back to, to the next meeting. So there's some that are proposed right there. Some options are to reduce the capital reserve allocation. But understanding that it would be prudent to allocate new major industrial taxes that come online to capital reserves so they can be used to fund utility renewal. Council could deny some or all of the new staff requests. Council could explore changes to other levels of service. And there is also the possibility of increasing fees and charges. However, it should be noted that increasing fees and charges will not actually result in significant dent in the deficit that we're facing this year. You can go to the next slide. This is a note that B C Assessment will release their revised role on March thirty first, which will take into account any appeals to assessed values. It is expected that changes are likely based on the revised role and any reductions to assessed values will impact the proposed tax rate increase. Even though tax rate may change, the value of budget requested remains the same without service changes. Next slide, please. So property taxes are not based on means to pay. Therefore, we want to make homeowners aware of some programs that help to aid those that may qualify. The provincial government offers residents the homeowner grant and tax deferral programs. These programs are available to reduce taxes paid and defer the tax payment through a loan that is recovered at the time of sale. Details can be found on the provincial government website, the city's website, or on the property tax notice. As in the last year, homeowners must make application to the province for the homeowner grant before the tax payment deadline on July fourth, or a provincial penalty will be applied. Go to gov dot B C dot C A forward slash homeowner grant or call toll free one eight 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 three five five two seven zero zero for more information and to make application. Next slide, please. We have prepared a budget document, which is available right after this council meeting. And it will be available tomorrow at City Hall and the library in paper form. This document and the presentation will be on the website. We encourage people to review it, given it provides the same information provided to council and general information people may not already know. Next slide, please. This is the third year we are using our budget simulation to obtain interactive feedback from the community. Starting with the city's draft balanced operations budget. This is easy, this easy to use simulation puts the user in the driver's seat of municipal service funding. There's information on all revenue and spending categories for people to understand what each department does. The tool requires the user to submit a balanced budget or one with a surplus. You can't submit a deficit. Simulation can be accessed through our website and on our Facebook page and will be launched today following the meeting. Next slide, please. And of course, other methods of feedback on the budget are by email, phone and mail, as well as in person at the council meeting at the following dates, April eleventh and April twenty fourth. Thank you for listening to the presentation. We do look forward to hearing from people as we proceed through this budget process.
Thank you, your worship. Just a couple of concluding comments if I can. First of all, we're not, obviously not pleased about the magnitude of the tax increase. I can tell you that staff, finance staff and all departments worked very hard to remove whatever they could from that was taxation based spending. You'll notice that there, that it is a robust plan for a lot of work, so much of which is supported by grants, by reserves and by dividends, approximately five, five point four million dollars of dividends from Legacy. That's a huge success story and has enabled us to carry on with so much that is required to be done. But it's not enough. We don't have enough revenue coming out of Legacy to do everything that we'd like to finance. And certainly it can't be used for operations because that just would create a hole for the future that we dig ourselves have, have difficulty digging ourselves out of. We did mention the impact of the PILT and the port tax cap. That, that, that was equivalent to about fourteen percent of the budget. And we're looking at a fifteen percent, fifteen point seven percent increase. If, if we resolve those two matters, the budget would be very different. I would mention that the very welcome news of sixty five million dollar grant from the province is great news. It, it will have an implication on the budget, the next version that you see. There will need to be some changes. Some of the projects that have been suggested for financing through, through borrowing or, or other sources will will now be able to be financed from that sixty five million dollars, but at the same time, as we're, as we're in the, the roads replacing the very old water lines, there are sewer lines, storm and sanitary that are of the same vintage. And we know from, from some camera work that, you know, they are collapsing as well. We can't go in and replace the water lines responsibly without dealing with those sewer lines that need to be replaced at the same time. So that we will save what can be reasonably saved, but we are going to need to budget for that work for this year. So that would be in the next version and that could be upwards of twenty five million dollars that we will have to deal with in this budget year. And I mentioned that we're some two hundred million dollars in total work between water and sewers in the first twenty six kilometers. The city is going to have to fund approximately one third of that. So there is good news, welcome news. We desperately needed that sixty five million dollars. But it means that the city is going to have to step up to funding its portion of the works. And at the base of this problem is the revenue issue. If we can't resolve the revenue issues, this gets dealt with with property taxes. And so that's that's why we are working so hard in trying to deal deal and resolve these revenue issues. I think it's important for the community to hear that. It's not just this year, it's future years as well.
What I'd like to know is what the actual pilt rate was and what it was reduced to that makes this big shortfall? And if we got that pilt rate back up to what it was, if the port in their gracious benevolent mood were to say, okay, we'll just pay full pilt, not the rest of lowered rate was. What was that assessed rate first and what did they get it down to by appealing it?
Your worship, it is changed from year to year, but it's a significant reduction. I will defer to Director Bombin to to give you the details of what the most significant drop was.
Thank you. So there was one piece of land that went down from it went from approximately fifty million dollars down to seven point six eight million. And so the payment in lieu of taxes or the pilt with relation to that one particular piece of property went down significantly, you can understand went down significantly, but it wasn't just that one particular property. Many of the bare land items that the port holds were reduced. So in general, the entire value went down by about seventy percent, but it has resulted in about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars lost out of our budget.
Just for my own clarity, as you went through Director, through the mayor, Director Bombin, you went through the various requests and where they are proposed to be funded from. And I found myself wondering what the criteria are for determining that something will be funded through reserves, say, versus taxation versus dividend. How flexible is that? Or is that actually based on a fairly hard set of rules for where various things can come from?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So basically, if something qualifies, if there's rules associated with a particular reserve, for example, land reserve or capital reserve, it has to be for a capital item. It can't be for an operational item such as wages. A large part of our budget obviously is wages, about fifty two percent of it. So dividends have been allocated to try and deal with some of the peaks to keep funding levels to a more consistent and smooth and predictable amount. So if dividends, for instance, which don't really have any particular rules around them, were provided to fund operations, if they weren't available the following year, there would be a significant increase in the budget that year, which is not predictable for anybody. And therefore, it's not recommended to be funded that way. Keeping up with the inflation through through taxation for items that don't qualify for other types of reserves is the best method to just eliminate the peaks and valleys out of operations. Some of the other items like surplus is not recommended to fund increases, operational increases out of surplus, because again, once you lose the surplus or you don't have it available anymore, it actually results in a doubling of the impact in future years. And then other items, as mentioned at the very, very beginning, utility fees can't fund operational items that are funded through taxation such as roads or recreation. User fees can contribute to operations. However, there is a bit of an inelasticity to user fees, meaning that you can't charge too high of an amount or you will see people just not going in utilizing the service, in which case then you've lost most of the fee that would have otherwise been contributing to your operations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions, if that's all right. First of all, I just wanted to say what a great draft document this is. This is very, very comprehensive, which I really appreciate. And I also wanted to flag awful lot of these things are from grants, which really shows a lot of hard work by a lot of people. Grants aren't easy to request. I did just wanna, in that same line, just make sure I'm correct in my understanding. So where it says it's a grant, that's money we have achieved. We're not asking anyone from our city to pay for it. When it's taxation, that's where the taxes are going up. Borrow, I'm not certain where that money comes from because I assume we're going to have to pay for it at some time. And maybe it's my inexperience, but I'm just not certain I understand then when do we pay for it? And so I'm hoping I can understand that. And then I have one more question.
Dr. Bomb, or Dr. Bombin? We're gonna do that a few times tonight. Dr. Bucken? Thank you, your worship. When when it's done by borrowing, the financing charges are then covered, you know, through either utility or or taxation. So it's the carrying costs that are the impact of budget. Now, if Director Bombin would like to add anything to that or correct anything I've just said, I'd welcome her to do that. Director Bombin?
Yeah, no, your Dr. Bucken is correct. So when it says borrowing, depending on what type of department it's in, if it's in a utility department, it would be funded out of utility fees, so an increase in utility fees. And then if it's in an operating department, so any of the items that was mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, such, you know, policing, roads, that sort of thing, anything that is an operation fund, it would be funded out of increased taxation. However, by borrowing, we typically can go from five years through to thirty years, depending on whether it's a short term borrowing or if it's a long term debenture. And of course, what that does is it minimizes the 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 large increase. For instance, obviously, there would have to be an increase in year one that would be felt. But but at least then the repayment is over a much longer term.
And Counselor Forster?
Thank you. My next question is in the package on page sixty four. We discussed two different pieces of equipment, the landfill dozer and the landfill excavator that currently are being rented. I'm wondering how much we spend per year renting these pieces of equipment? Because I'm just wondering if if that cost would then reduce what like if we're already spending ten dollars and it costs us twenty dollars, it actually we're only having to pay ten dollars because we already would have paid it, if that makes sense?
Director Bombin?
Yes, Counselor Forster is correct. So we're already paying through through rental fees. So those fees will be converted over to paying the borrowing, but we would own the asset.
So how much, Mr. Mayor, are we paying to rent them?
So have you got a number on what the current rent on those are? Director Bombin?
I don't have that on right on me right now, but we can obtain that and bring it forward to the next meeting.
Just for comparison. Thank you. Any other questions? You've got all the department people here. If you have a particular question on, Counselor Nish?
Actually, not a question, just a little conversation. So, you know, I spent the last two nights reading this budget or, you know, proposed budget over. And, you know, it's a hard one to swallow. There's no doubt about it. But going through it, I mean, for one, I will say it's a it's a it is an excellent document. It does, it lays it all out and I really, really would like people to to read it. Because we all know that most people will have comments or or, you know, opinions on on what the money is being spent on. But if you go through this document and you see the good majority of these requests are really rollovers, grant funding, and really, there's not a lot of taxation requests on there. The taxation requests, there is a few staff positions, which, you know, we will get into those discussions as this process goes on. But looking at another piece of paper here, those staff proposals are only one point one percent of this increase. So it's really, even if we eliminated all of those staff requests, it's only one point one percent of this fifteen point seven. So it's it's really not a lot. You know, it's the perfect storm. I mean, we we got hit with inflation. We got hit with everything, the cost of everything going up. You know, legal costs. It's and legal costs, I'll just point that out that that's probably increased due to our facts of all the issues that we're dealing with the port authority on. So the one thing that, you know, I do want to point out to people and when they really think about taxes, you know, and I never thought about this when I before I was on council, you know, break it down to what you pay every day. You know, I'm my house is unfortunately, I am able to build my own house and I've built myself a pretty nice house. If I had to pay someone to do it, it probably wouldn't look like that. And with that has come a fairly high assessment. And I'm probably, you know, I'm not the highest in this town, but I'm definitely one of the higher ones. And I and I did up some numbers. And, you know, this affects me too as a taxpayer. And, you know, at the end of the day, with taxes, with the proposed tax increase, with all the money that we collect on behalf of other agencies, which people always lump it into the taxes, but the reality is, is I don't know what the number is, but it's probably thirty five percent of the money we collect is actually on behalf of other people or other agencies. So when I factor in that, the amount of money in taxes and our utilities, which is about fifteen hundred bucks a year, I'm going to be paying over seven thousand dollars in taxes and utilities this year. But you factor that divided out by three hundred and sixty five days and it's seventeen dollars a day. Now, when I look at what you look at this ninety two pages of this budget and you realize what you get for seventeen dollars, what I'm getting for seventeen dollars a day and what lots of people are getting for ten dollars a day. You're getting police, fire, roads, water. I mean, obviously, we're working on those things too. You're getting recreation, you're getting trails, you're getting, you know, garbage dump. The amount of stuff you're getting and I'm getting for seventeen dollars a day or proposed seventeen dollars a day, you know, that barely buys you a McChicken burger with fries and a pop. So, you know, people are are always, you know, very hesitant to pay taxes and they always feel the taxes are high. And and I think over the last eight years, we've done a a job to kind of get us our taxes more in line with other communities. And we have not raised them near as much as other communities. But this year, it's the perfect storm and a lot of communities are in our boat. And 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 it would be, I just want people to understand that realize what you're getting and what you pay. Figure out what you pay a year and divide it out by three hundred and sixty five days and think about that and think about, are you willing to go buy a pack of smokes for twenty dollars? Or are you willing to get all of these services that are in this? Are you willing to go buy a case of beer for thirty bucks? Or are you going to pay ten dollars for all of these services? And and I know it's it's everywhere. People complain about property taxes and I was one of those people. But now, when I, you know, when I look back at it and I think about what you get for what you pay, it is actually cheap. Now, when you, if you want to have a complaint, start looking at your paycheck every month and figure out what you pay the federal and provincial governments every day. And then maybe you'll have a different view of what where your money goes. So that being said, I'm not happy that we have to look at an increase of this much. It's a it's sad to think that, you know, we're in a community that has such massive industrial properties and and really they do very little benefit to the to the community as far as building. They do provide a lot of jobs, but as far as maintaining a community for them to be in and for their staff to live in, it does very little. So I really hope that that we can change that. And I, you know, when I, when Dr. Bucken stated that it's approximately fourteen percent between the tax cap and the pilt payments, fourteen percent of this fifteen point seven percent is basically related to that. That's something to think about.
Dr. Bucken? Your worship, I would like to ask Manager Higginson if he has an answer to Counselor Forster's earlier question. I think he may.
Go ahead. Hello. So for the excavator that we currently rent as needed at the landfill, it's just over ten thousand dollars a month for that one, which is why this one was such a priority for staff to to get replaced with owned equipment.
Thank you. It's helpful. Yeah. Any other, Counselor Adi?
I just want to acknowledge that I think many of us are hearing this and filtering it through the lens of home taxes, property taxes, but we also have businesses in town. I think many of them may argue that they're operating on a pretty tight margin. And these kinds of numbers will hurt and I want to acknowledge that. I wish it wasn't so, obviously. And that goes right up the ladder to other larger players who are not protected by the cap and not subject to the pilt. So there's a whole lot of players involved here that are all in a field of pinch in their own ways. So I guess my encouragement then is for not only homeowners who wish to express their opinions to give us their feedback, but also business owners and and anyone else that's in this mix that wants to give us some feedback. Because really, we need the public's help in understanding what directions to take with this that represent the priorities of the people we serve.
Director Bombin?
Thank you. I just feel like I should probably mention that if somebody were to go to the simulation, there's actually another little spot at the bottom of, on the bottom right, it says taxpayer receipt. And this is in relation to what Counselor Nish was actually talking about. You can go ahead and click on taxpayer receipt and put in your assessed value. And it'll tell you approximately how much under the draft increase that you will be paying in municipal property taxes. Counselor Nish was correct in saying that thirty five percent of the tax bill is actually collected on behalf of other agencies and does not go to the municipality itself. That's only sixty five percent of the bill that you'll receive actually is paid to the city to operate the city. But if you go to taxpayer receipt, it'll break down how much your taxes and you'll be that you'll be paying for each of the services that are identified. So RCMP, fire, recreation, airport ferry. So you will see out of, say, if it's a nineteen hundred dollar bill, for instance, it will break it down depending on what the allocation of taxes to each of those departments is in order to balance the budget. So you will be able to see how much you're paying for an entire year for that department's service.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? Counselor Randawa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the agreed budget. So like my question, like So like my question, like in past, like when pulp mill was down, so our taxpayer, they were supporting the mill for all these years. So now we are good thing like pulp mill is back, back is on, back arsenal, and we have legacy fund, and I saw many funds like capital projects supported by the legacy fund. So I'm wondering like if we have any other option? We have still capacity to fund some more money from, we can use from legacy fund to use in those, another projects like civic center, replacement program, some other, other projects we can use some more money from legacy fund so that we can give some pay to our taxpayers.
Right. So the question is, basically, are we maximizing the use of legacy funds? In, in the way we watch you. Dr. Bucken, have you got any comment on that?
Your Worship, it, it, it is a fine question. I can tell you that the directors that you've appointed to that company have looked at that very, very hard. There is a requirement to maintain some funds within that organization for, for its costs. I think that we're pretty much maxed out at five point four million dollars that would otherwise be taxpayer-funded expenditures this year. Certainly, the directors will, will look at any opportunity if, if, if that improves. But I think at this point, you know, we, we've gone over this in such detail and funded some of these even smaller projects, like ten thousand dollars for a project. It's, I don't think that we have much room or if any room left, but we will look at it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from members of council? Counselor Skelton Morgan?
I just wanted to thank our management team for putting this together. And just like for context sake, like for me, one of the major eye openers is just how we've been able to diversify some of our revenues with Watson's Islands leases and tax revenues. And, and how this could have been a thirty percent increase very easily if we didn't have Legacy Inc. in place and where that kind of compounds. And then some of the pieces that really also stood out is just around the PILs and some of the caps that are put in place and things that we cannot particularly control, we can continue to advocate for. But it does leave us in a bit of a bind come budget season. So I just wanted to thank the staff for putting that together.
Thank you. Counselor Cunningham?
I, I was just reading this other note we've gotten. The city's managed only just over four percent increase in total in the last seven years. Now, I know in the last seven years when we didn't put taxes up, other communities had. And if you look back over Terrace and a lot of other communities and their increases in that and the increases they're doing, most of them double-digit this year already, we come out probably way ahead. You know, I know we're kind of paying for not increasing the taxes a little bit over the last four or five years, but it might soften this blow, but the fact is that we have enjoyed a relatively nice period of time with very little tax increases and that. So I, I think it's something that should be noted. And also, I, I hope the public that we represent will look at this document. It's fantastic. You know, I can't imagine how much time the staff's put into this. And if anyone's got any questions, they're gonna be answered here or they can ask any of us. But I really, I really appreciate what we've got here. It makes our job a lot easier.
Yeah, including some comparisons to where we will land relative to other communities. So you can actually see in a very graphic form, and so I agree with the counselor. Counselor Forster?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great segue actually into my question. On page thirty-two, it breaks down each community in the area. And it has a comment at the bottom for your information, and it's talking about RCMP expenses and articulates that some other communities don't pay for policing costs from municipal, municipal property taxes, but it doesn't say where they do pay for them. And because they're not free, so I'm just wondering how those other communities do pay for it.
Dr. Bucken or Director Baumann? Director Baumann, please, yeah.
Okay, I can answer that. Yeah, so the province actually pays for it. It's, it's paid in part out of their property taxes, but not, not very much at all.
There's a formula, depending on your population, five thousand, under fifteen thousand.
Sorry, I'll just, I'll just mention that if we get to fifteen thousand in population, our contribution towards the RCMP contract goes from seventy percent to ninety percent. And currently, that would be about another million and a half dollars a year.
So we're gonna be watching very carefully when we hit fourteen nine nine nine, the fifteen thousand person is gonna get charged an awful lot to come meet with Prince Rupert. All right. Any other questions or comments from council? Any comments or questions from staff? All right, well, listen, I, I think, first of all, I need to apologize, my mic was not on for the beginning of the meeting. I'm, I'm the sole individual at fault for that. I, I just do want to offer a couple reflections. You know, I, I wasn't involved in this for fourteen years. I, I was part of a council that was dealing with budget issues, but in a very different way. Trying to keep a community alive, trying to keep a community from going bankrupt and trying to reinvent an economy that had really shifted from the decline of logging and mining and fishing and, not that those are all dead, but the very clear decline, and reinvent itself around this whole new trade corridor around, built around a container terminal, which, which I, I remind people all the time, everywhere we went, people said, "It won't work." "It will not work in Prince Rupert. You're too far from any large urban market." Thirty percent of the cans that come off of any other ship anywhere else in the world are delivered into the local market. And, and it worked. So I come back fourteen years later with some observations. And one is that on the job side, it has been successful beyond our wildest dream. Not only in terms of the container terminal jobs, but the improvements that CN made allowed for other industries, Ramon, the pellet plants, the, the gas terminals, both on Watson and, and on Ridley and all the other opportunities that are coming in front of us. On the jobs front, huge success. I've got to tell you, on the revenue to the corporation that has to pave the roads, it's disappointing. I would have thought by now, there would have been a lot more revenue flowing into this, this corporation that actually has to use that money to go out and do the work. And, and council after council has done its best to manage that revenue shortfall. And, and the end result is that while we've made some progress in certain areas, after coming back fourteen years later, a whole lot of our cities in worse shape than what it was fourteen years ago. Our pipes are fourteen years older, our roads are fourteen years older, our rec center, our swimming pool, our ice rink are fourteen years older with no plan, with no revenue, sorry, to be able to replace any of them. And, and that's a problem. We have all talked about and hoped that there would be a new industry that would pay more taxes that would pull us out of this. We've all hoped that the RBA, which people have been working on since twenty fourteen, that the RBA, the Resource Benefit Alliance, would get us out of this. We all hope that changes to the cap or addressing the PIL would help us. And, and, but it's always been next year, next year, next year. Well, it's all come home to roost, as Counselor Nish said very well. But I want to lift up two things that I think are important in my mind. The premier has given us an opportunity to pivot. Sixty-five million dollars is a massive amount of money. And, and while it doesn't address, you know, a six hundred or six hundred and fifty million dollar infrastructure deficit, it goes a long way. It gets us started in a way that we, I think, couldn't have dreamt of. And the other piece is the, the work of the previous council that's put us in this position as well, that we aren't dealing with a water dam, because the dam has been replaced. And a whole lot of the work that's gone into that has been done. And work on the RBA has gone forward. We're closer, I hope, to, to an agreement. Unfortunately, I just don't believe any of that will help us this year. But I think it's actually time. I, I, I think it's time, my own view, I can only speak personally, to turn to the people of Prince Rupert and say, "This is our town." It's our town. And those roads that have fallen into disrepair are our roads. And the water system that's fallen into disrepair is our water system. And if nobody else is gonna help us, other than the premier stepping forward, if we can't get the other sources of revenue, let's turn to ourselves. Let's start today to, to really, really renovate and rebuild our, our community, the place that we love, the place where we work and live. And, and I, I hope there's good, healthy debate around fifteen point seven and the implications that has for, for families. But I've, I've got to tell you, I'm gonna be saying, "Let's do what we need to do to rebuild our town." And, and let's go to work on, on attracting all the other forms of revenue that we possibly can. Let's keep working on the RBA. Let's keep working on, on a, a, a solution to the cap that works for everybody. I, I'm not pointing my finger at anybody. Let's just work on solutions that work for everybody. And I actually think we're, we're on a pivot point. It goes back to what the premier did, it goes back to what the previous council did. I think we've been given a once-in-a-generation opportunity. I honestly believe that. It's a once-in-a-generation opportunity, and I think if we seize it, we're gonna be amazed what we achieve over the next four years. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn while we thank our staff for all the hard work. Counselor Randawa, Counselor Adie, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Carry.